Good evening and welcome to the February 24th Toewallton City Council Work Session. Tonight we'll start off with a discussion of urban renewal feasibility studies. Welcome Aquila and Jonathan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Johnson Taylor. I'm the City Council Development Manager.
And I'm Aquila Hurd Ravitch, Community Development Director.
So, based on last year's 2019 education series, council reiterated its support for Central Urban Renewal District as well as Leventon Tax Increment. And over the course of those three sessions, we went through on how to proceed with Central Urban Renewal District and also identify additional projects in Leventon. And then in January of this year, the TDC and City Council allocated funds to the TDC Administrative Fund for Feasibility Studies and they officially closed heard. And over the course of the education series, as well as conversations with each of you, both at the city manager level, the department level, council work session, what we've heard was there are several identified development opportunities that you would like to proceed over the next few years. Some of those included the development of amenities to support public transportation, redevelopment opportunities both downtown and throughout the city, visible retail recruitment, affordable housing, site development improvements, expanded mixed use both for existing and new development, greenfield development, and Basalt Creek infrastructure improvements. So given what we've heard in working with the city manager and Aquila, we've identified general areas in which these potential projects, both where you would like them to occur as well as where opportunities exist, that there are two areas within Toewallton that those would be feasible to do. And in the map attached to your staff report, as well as displayed on the screen, these are the general areas that are proposed. Excuse me, I will look at, I forgot to bring my staff report, so I'm using my phone. But, so, the feasibility study is a technical document that looks at the return on investment for tax increment revenues. And then it will lead to the eventuality of a plan formation. And the one that was provided last time was Central Urban Renewal District as an example. So what that entails is that this is not a policy document nor a planning document. This is a general feasibility study on the general areas of the defined, of what we intend to do for the urban renewal areas. So moving forward, if council identifies these areas or additional areas in which they wish to examine, then city staff will get together and work with our consultant, also with the identified project areas to generally define the boundary. And then we will bring that back to you for a council boundary review. And then we will proceed forward with Elaine Howard on the feasibility study, which is the identification of tax lots and the tax increment finance. And I hope I didn't make that too technical, and if I did, I apologize. But these are the generalized proposed areas for the two general urban renewal areas that we've identified based on what we've heard. So tonight, do you agree with the general proposed areas? And would you like staff to proceed as discussed on January 13th with the feasibility studies for these areas?
Comments, questions?
Well, Johnson, would you talk about the areas just in terms of why those were identified and kind of what goals those might achieve?
Yes, ma'am. So, in one of the...
Can we, I'm sorry, can we use the map actually?
Yeah. Okay. So, for example, if we look at the upper quadrant or the moose's ears.
I think it's antler.
The antler.
This is what Jonathan and I do all day. We just like argue about silly things.
Right.
Is it an ear or an antler?
So, some of the questions that were posed to council during the education series was if council had the opportunity to do future urban renewal areas, or if there were projects identified that they wished to accomplish and urban renewal was a tool for that ability. Several of the identified projects were transportation amenities improvement in the Bridgeport area, mixed use development and retail recruitment in the town center, most notably the Hagan's Lot, or affordable housing located near transportation improvements such as West Station. Also, any kind of parks or recreation amenities that associate with pedestrian enhancements for transportation. In the lower left quadrant, the Southwest Industrial Concept Plan, as well as Basalt Creek, Basalt Creek Infrastructure, future transportation development for site development, including employment lands, which was identified in the EOA and HNA earlier this year for policy prioritization. And the greenfield development, which was another noted thing that when we were presenting the Metro Site Toolkit, that some of these greenfield developments, which was what Leventon used to be back in the day, that these were some of the notable improvements that we could do as well. In addition to the ones that we just mentioned, redevelopment opportunities, so with the given added benefit of the opportunity zones, as well as, excuse me, the tool coupled with urban renewal, certain redevelopment opportunities could occur on the east side of I-5, for example, the proposed multifamily unit development that may come forward.
It's, it's in, that's already...
That, okay, okay, it's already coming forward. So, those type of developments along major roadways, thoroughfares, and intersections could also be a tool that could occur, which council did identify earlier last year with affordable housing or additional housing opportunities with mixed use development. I was just asking, am I being too broad and I apologize?
All right, no, it's good.
Yeah, Paul?
I've got a couple of questions, but first, can you please expand on the, what you meant by greenfield development, please?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I interject a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna try to use the mouse on the map. Is that showing up?
I have a red pointer.
Oh. Is it, does the mouse work for you, okay? Or would you rather me use the pointer? So, I guess just to orient a little bit, this is 124th and Toowall and Sherwood Road. So this development's happening right now with PGE. And then the thought is, is that if there is infrastructure in place, kind of going south along 124th, there may be opportunities for development there. And then following that around, this would end up being Basalt Creek Parkway. I can't quite make it out, but somewhere in here is Tonkin Road. So in here is where we've identified for Basalt Creek to have industrial lands. So the greenfield would be turning those lands into development. And then, oh, I lost my mouse. And then, just kind of continuing over, so here's, this area is the residential portion of Basalt that's been actively considered right now for residential development. So that, that's where the majority of greenfield development was considered, was in kind of this corridor, and then in that kind of Tonkin Industrial Group, which is not, not greenfield because there's existing businesses or existing uses.
What's your view?
Oh, 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 that's what you're asking, I'm sorry.
No, I want to know the area too, I mean, that was very good.
Well, so that means that there's nothing there, right? It's, it's literally green, or maybe it's brown, but it's...
It's literally a green field.
Right. Sorry.
Is the Tonkin Industrial Area, the southwest industrial area part of this, or is it excluded from this?
No, it's, it's...
So it's in part of this blue?
Yeah, 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 it's kind of this...
I'm looking at the roads going, I think that's most of it.
Yeah, it's, it's this, my corner right in here.
It's like the heel of it, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, I like that.
All right. So, the, a couple more questions, please. If the, on the upper screen, the big circle that embraces Nyberg Road.
Uh-huh.
So, part of that is already like Cabela's and whatnot, so would that be divided? Or is that all considered to be one large area, even though a lot of it is literally untouched? I mean, you can't do anything with the Cabela's or with what I'm gonna call the Best Buy complex?
Right.
Good question, councilor. So, in terms of what urban renewal tries to do, you can actually include any of those parcels in a potential feasibility study. Now whether you intend to do anything with it with a plan is up to council or the developer in that partnership. So, if I'm answering the question correctly, that's up to you. We can, the reason we put it as a generalized area is just because of the noted nature of how development occurs, as well as kind of the identified projects. But in terms of the boundary review, it may not include that.
Okay. Then the next question is assuming, well, let's take all, even though I would, I would be opposed to spending any money on studying, you know, what we're gonna do with Cabela's because that's gonna be there for a long, in my mind, that's just my own opinion. But what is the percentage of all those lands as, with respect to the size of the city?
Do you know?
So, there is no percentage that has been associated with these proposed areas, because eventually we will have to balance it off the 25% state law requirement, but we also have to take into account the Leventon existing tax increment finance district. And so when we as city staff get together with our consultant, that will be taken into account and then will come back to council for that.
I guess where my confusion is developing here is why would, and let's just say that all equals 37%, and then you have Leventon, which we're not gonna get rid of for whatever reason the decision's made. And so, why would you spend money to study an area that you can't develop because you're beyond the 25% capacity?
Oh, the feasibility...
Am I missing something, huh?
Oh, I apologize, sir. The feasibility study will meet state requirements. So whatever boundaries we decide on as a city and a council approves, it will meet that threshold for requirement, including Leventon. So, and then council also has the ability to shrink Leventon in the future around the noted projects that we are identifying currently that we're working on. So we're not gonna present to you something that is not feasible.
Okay. Robert?
What's the typical life of an urban renewal area?
Until it reaches maximum medadiness, typical is between 20 and 30 years.
Okay.
Robert?
Yeah, with respect to the areas that are in Southwest Concept Area and Basalt Creek, I know we had an introductory conversation about having a urban renewal district outside the existing city limits, but does this presume that all that land is annexed before it becomes an urban renewal district? Or could it be done before? How does that work?
So yes, it will assume that the land will be annexed.
Okay. And, I mean, I know there's no timeline, at least at this point, for the majority of what's in Basalt Creek and the Southwest Concept Area to be annexed, right? I mean, Southwest Concepts mostly still gravel pits, quarries.
Correct.
Okay. So, second question, on the area up in the top right, well, I guess the middle right, is the bottom boundary there, is that Sagard Street?
So, I, if this is conveying like a specific area of note, that was not my intention. So what I did was I just drew a circle around it.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it's Sagard.
That is Sagard Street. Okay. And then, in terms of the overall percentage, that 25%, that's based on landmass as of the date that the urban renewal district is adopted?
Yes.
Okay. So, this annexation part's gonna play a big chicken and egg...
Yes.
...element in what we do. Okay. And then, with respect to other areas that are not outside, are outside the city, outside annexed, and are not currently being planned, does the same principles apply in terms of an urban renewal district? So, you know, the eastern part of I-5, the Norwood area over there, the Stafford area, where we've talked a little bit about, you know, the pending cost of development, whatever those plans are gonna be, are we able to make urban renewal districts in those places before they're annexed?
So, no.
No, no, I thought Elaine said that that was possible, in coordination with the county.
That's the caveat.
That's the caveat.
What I am proposing, or what I'm presenting tonight, is if city council was the only sole discretionary authority.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other question. So the, the cost of the study is for all three circles, is not per circle, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right.
No other questions?
Have one?
Sure.
We have time, one quick follow-up. Two, I'm not sure I understood your answer to Councilor Kellogg. So, the 25% doesn't, does not include the land that's outside the city limit, but would be a part of any designation that would be annexed in, correct? I'm probably not asking that in a very clear way.
So, if you don't mind, if I'm, the 25%, please...
So, if I understood you correctly, the land outside the city limits, and let's take Basalt Creek, it's not within the city limits, but we're studying it and we're looking at it, but we can't bring it, we bring it in as it gets annexed, at what point in time does it count towards the 25%?
Okay. So as the city map, or as city boundaries grow, so does your obvious percentage. And so with the question that you're posing, when does it come in? It would be based on the plan document, not the feasibility study. There are two parts to what, how to establish an urban renewal. The feasibility study, which is non-binding, it's just a general look at the financial health of the area. Then if council or the TDC wish to move forward, then they would implement a plan document. And then upon plan ratification would mean the requirements of the 25% as well as the general defined areas. So, between now and whenever the, a plan document is established, you could have more landmass that's been added to the city, which therefore increases your likelihood of a larger urban renewal area in wherever you decide to put that.
Can you go to your next step slide?
Yes, sir.
Because that might stir discussion more.
One more, one more.
So, if city council decides to move forward with feasibility studies, there are a rough timeline. So during the spring, we would define the proposed areas, and then council would approve those boundaries. And then once those boundaries are approved, then the study would commence, and then sometime in June, the results would be presented back to you by Elaine Howard. Concurrently, we want to make sure that we present this forward, that we are continuing to identify the Leventon projects concurrently, and we will be conducting public outreach within the next few months. So, we're still working on that, there's a lot, there is a lot of a wish list that's being compiled, and so we're making sure that we have the best bang for the buck for the tax increment in the district. Concurrently, though, as we move forward, as I noted in the staff report, that if we do identify potential areas for urban renewal, at some point, when we identify projects in the Leventon Tax Increment District, those would have to be shrunk down to those project areas to give you greater room for mobility, for whatever boundary you wish to proceed with, both in the Southwest Concept Plan or in the Central Business District.
Questions?
Two more questions. I seem to remember that urban renewal districts don't need to be contiguous, is that accurate?
In terms of mapping?
Yeah.
They, they do have to be contiguous.
I thought they did.
They, they gotta touch.
Yeah, okay.
So it could look like what you have in Portland, which is various snake line roads.
Right.
Or you can have what we currently have, which is Leventon down 124th.
Yeah. And this may be getting a little too into the weeds, but in terms of the feasibility study and looking at maximum potential value, do they take the current zoning and then assign some fully built-out value to each parcel to figure out what, what...
That I do not know. That's, that is a good question and I can...
Thanks.
I've got one more question on the, the spring, summer. So the spring is where you're gonna first, take those three blobs and get them pretty granular on what we're gonna study, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then Elaine kicks in with, in the summer?
No, Elaine...
Or is she doing both parts?
She will be doing both parts, yes, sir.
So she'll zoom in on making those blobs a little bit more granular, and then, once we decide, yep, that's what we think the three would be, she goes heavy into it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Robert, go ahead.
So would this be actually like two separate, or, because the moose ear, as you described it, those two are touching, so that could be one urban renewal area and the other one, so we'd have two that we're looking at?
So, yes, yes, ma'am. And we could, and we were talking today, I mean, this is just a general proposed area, so if you have other ideas, we'd be more than happy to incorporate those at this time.
Anything else? So you need direction or approval, or is this just informational?
Yeah, we're just wanna make sure that, that you're comfortable with us moving forward with the feasibility studies and, yeah, generally in those areas, and we'll come back for...
So, I guess, again, back to my whole confusion on your bubbles that apparently were randomly drawn. And I get, this is a question I'm gonna pose to staff and also, I guess, to the rest of council. Do we want to look at everything, and then later on narrow it down? Or do we want to begin focusing in the beginning on, let's say, Basalt Creek, or the Hagan's Old Lot, or the Bridgeport? I mean, which, from a, from a staff perspective, which is better? And I guess from a just, what we're doing as a council, and I would pose this question to the councils, in terms of what their sense is of, do you throw it all up against the wall, or...
Well, if, I guess if I could, give my own idea. So, a good, there's parts of our city that are just built out residential.
Right.
So I think they would just be off the table. There, there's a good chunk of our industrial area that's getting built out, that has infrastructure that doesn't necessarily need assistance. There's also a good chunk of our industrial area that is, is in an urban renewal area. So, the places to look at are places that, that you as a council and we as staff think might need some help in developing, or, so when Leventon came in, there's no way it would have developed like it has if there hadn't been investments in that infrastructure. So if we wanted to see Southwest Concept Plan and Basalt, like, develop in a certain way in a certain time period, you know, we, that's partly why we chose that area, right? We'd make some investments there. So that's kind of one way to look at it. It, I don't know, I guess my own personal thought, and you guys will have your own thought, I don't know that it's worth it to just look at the whole city, because the whole city doesn't need the same kind of, the same level of investment. But that, I think that's kind of the, the key, is like what areas have you been hearing about, have you been talking about, that you'd like to see something different happen? And it's not happening, and if we had a tool to help incentivize it, we could see something different happening, so...
For me, the two critical pieces about those two circles in the north, are those the two opportunity zones. So you'd have an urban renewal opportunity and the OZ, maybe to put a package, package together that's super attractive to developers, that we can leverage things and get the city to look the way we want it to look, versus letting developers, you know, having no incentive to have, to give developers to develop the way we want.
Right.
And how we envision it.
In the, in our discussions with, with staff, the reason that these have been proposed generally larger than what we've been doing in the past is because the noted conversations with the education series about the inability of transferring monies from Leventon to Central Urban Renewal District, because you have two different types of development for the Southwest Concept Plan and Basalt Creek that could both fuel each other's development if they're attached in the same urban renewal district. Same thing with what the mayor just noted about the, kind of the Central Business District. If you have, in 10 years, a development that increases traffic capacity and transit options within the antler of the moose, if you have that attached to other areas of the city within the Central Business District, it could fuel potential programs and policy developments that are near and dear to this council and the community that can leverage those resources.
Nicely put.
Because the question was, is why are these so large? Well, it's, there is a method to that kind of approach, but then that comes down to the actual boundaries.
Right, when she strings, she'll probably shrink these down a little bit.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Anything else? Got her?
So, you were making some reference to like a street connector, so why wouldn't you just kind of include Boones Ferry, so you'd have one, you know, big, I guess?
Because of the high school, it's too, no.
Do you live in Portland? All right. Is that it? All right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Also, do we have...
Yeah.
You know, an agreement to move forward?
No.
Hmm?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
It's the general area.
Yeah, generally, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. No, disagreeing that they should move forward.
Right.
All right. So item number two, building height in mixed-use commercial areas. Welcome, Steve and Erin, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you change your hair?
I have bangs now.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing.
Sure.
So, good evening, mayor and councillors. My name is Erin Aghman, I'm the Associate Planner.
Steve Cooper, Cities Planning Manager.
Still have bangs?
They're there.
They're there.
And, tonight, I would like to follow up on a discussion we had towards the end of 2018 regarding a future potential plan text amendment and plan map amendment to increase the maximum building height in the mixed-use commercial zone within the Bridgeport area. So for tonight's discussion, we'll start with some background and foundational information, and then we'll move into what staff has learned with some proposed updates we'd like to present to you, and the tools we use to get there through our transportation analysis and some outreach to property owners, and then what the potential next steps might involve. So to orient ourselves, the Bridgeport area is south of our boundary with Tigard, and between Lower Boones Ferry Road and I-5. And presently, there's a mix of maximum building heights in this area, that range between 45 feet up to 70 feet. The 45 feet is currently an area that's eligible to be brought into the mixed-use commercial overlay district, but it is considered general commercial right now. So when we last met, council had asked us to look at building heights between 70 feet, but lower than 100 feet. And you would ask that we ensure the transportation system could support these impacts, and that parking requirements would still apply to these taller buildings. And the last thing that we were to consider was how building heights might be increased in other parts of Toewallton. So, through our research, staff would like to present an increased building height of 70 feet across the mixed-use commercial overlay area. And then we've identified five properties that could accommodate 100 feet with limited uses. And we'd also like to reformat Chapter 57, which is the mixed-use commercial overlay district. We found that this chapter functions more as a zoning district rather than an overlay district. And if council finds support with that, that would create some flexibility for applying it in other parts of the city that are deemed appropriate. And lastly, we'd like to ask council's opinion on updating the zoning map to accommodate this new district that we'd like to propose. And this map shows kind of what the maximum building height updates would look like compared to the previous light I had up. The orange would be the five identified properties that could accommodate up to 100 feet. And through our research, we engaged DKS, which is a traffic consultant, to analyze the potential traffic impacts. The study found no significant impacts to the transportation system with the proposed building height increase with the limited uses. And when I say limited uses, we identified those being mixed-use residential, so some commercial with a residential component, or limited to commercial lodging. And I believe that our consultant found that with those standards, we would be only contributing maybe 20 trips to an individual movement during the weekday PM peak hour, so not a substantial impact.
And just to, to add to that, when development actually comes in the door to proposed development, they'd have to do their own traffic study to determine that the actual development isn't going to have an adverse impact. So this is future planning, and then the actual planning will take care of it again at that time.
Thank you for that. And if you're interested in looking at more of the details, we've included this draft analysis as Exhibit 1. And staff has also outreach the potential...
So this is future planning, and then the actual planning will take care of it again at that time.
Thank you for that. And if you're interested in looking at more of the details, we've included this draft analysis as Exhibit 1. And staff has also outreach the potential 100-foot zone. There's two property owners in this area, and we found that the property owners are generally in support of this proposal. And as you can see in this map, some of the businesses identified in this area include Boom Fitness, the Grand Hotel, and the Xfinity Site. One of the sites is currently vacant.
Anything, just to also interject to this point, these properties were identified in part because, as council may remember, there was originally property owner interest from one of the properties specifically. But then additionally, these ancillary properties were developed, or there's another parcel that was undeveloped, and then there's also underdeveloped properties. And so the idea being that essentially this could serve as like a test case for the success of having a higher building height. And then, that kind of ties into Erin's point about our work in formulating these updates in a way in which they could hopefully be replicated in the future in other areas of the city.
And just to recap, we wanted to look to council for potential next steps. This would include noticing affected agencies and property owners, and then presenting some proposed updates to Planning Commission for feedback and recommendation. And then we would bring that back to City Council for adoption. And with that, I'll finish with questions, if you might have for staff.
Questions? Of course. Go ahead, Paul.
Sorry.
This is okay.
Couple of points of clarification. So, it's currently 50 and 70 feet in that area, correct? 50 to 70?
It is, and so really what our research took us back to, and this is part of both our background research and our transportation analysis, is that the 50 versus 70 was essentially just the way that it was formatted. I think that at the time, our historical research indicated that there was an interest in having a different, lesser height that was, that didn't match up with Tigard's heights. And so there, as you see, there's a higher height where the boundary is with Tigard there.
Correct.
And so the 50 feet wasn't based, wasn't a limitation, it was essentially an artificially imposed limitation. And so the thought being that if the whole district was able to go to 70, that it would just make more sense to have it as 70. And then, again, if there's areas of that, of the properties within that area that are underdeveloped and could take advantage of that building height, then we would be able to capture that without having to do additional transportation analysis. And so it seemed like an easy win.
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought I understood. So then the next question was, you referenced that this would be, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't remember the exact words you used, but that this would be like a test for development in other parts of the city, because currently we're at 50 in the rest of the city?
Correct. And so, I mean, I think that just to emphasize Erin's points, I mean, we put a considerable amount of work into the transportation analysis to get here. We started this process, like she said, in 2018.
Right.
And so to some extent, you know, part of this is the lessons that we learned in formulating this analysis. And then I think the second part is to see what kind of development comes out of this. Just, you know, is it successful? Does, I mean, part of the threshold question, I guess in my mind, was, does increasing building heights actually result in development? Because I think we've heard that from some folks in the community before, is that if we just increase our building heights, then that would encourage development. And I think that that's certainly a valid theory, but we don't know that, right?
Correct.
And so I think this is a good opportunity to test out that in a small space without putting in a lot of work and money to study transportation impacts in a vast area, which could cost a lot of money to study.
And I agree, just, and this is my own commentary, that one of the things I'm learning, and you're kind of alluding to it with this recommendation, builders are not interested in fighting City Hall. So if the guideline is there, then they're, we think, because I agree with you, I've heard that as well for like, for the Hagens development. It poses in my mind a question for the housing across the street from Amquah Bank on Lower Boones Ferry Road, if they could go higher. But we also know from the comments made by some nonprofits at our own housing forum, Open House, a lot of months ago now, where they just said, we just don't take the time, we don't even bother, if it's not, if that invitation isn't there, we're not going to go. So I appreciate you, both of you, really looking out for, you know, some potential and handling it in a way that I think is very, very good.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So.
Robert.
Oh. So just so I can have an idea, so 70 feet would be about seven floors, based on 10 feet.
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah.
And so, of course, like some, you know, certain kinds of residential would tend toward the 10, you know, 10 feet or so, and then certain kinds of commercial might have higher. So you might have like, say, you know, 16-foot retail space on the ground floor, and then smaller residential stories. It kind of depends on building construction. I know we had some of those questions when we first brought this to council originally, I think because of the fact that stories can be kind of a squishy term, we felt that it was better to focus on the height and then let the individual development drive that question.
Decide, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Robert. So, I picked out of the presentation that you were looking at changing this as an overlay to an actual district. So how does that affect, you know, let's just say, central commercial? Would it be better idea to have it more flexible, to be an overlay that you could put it over central commercial? Are we also, in the next agenda item, going to be talking about building heights in central commercial?
So I think the answer to the question really is, is that, and I don't want to get too into the weeds with this one, but basically the way overlay districts normally function is, is that they make a reference back to the district which they overlay. And in this case, the MUCOD doesn't. It doesn't have any tie back to the central, or excuse me, general commercial district. And in fact, it has its own set of standards which supplant those standards. And then furthermore, you need to do a zone change, a text amendment, to get into the MUCOD in the first place, which is really exactly like a zone change to another zone. And so, it is, it's an overlay district in name, but it's not, it doesn't function like one. And so I think the idea that Erin alluded to was recognizing that fact that it is a district. And then, as a district, it's one of the more unique districts in the city, and it has these, encourages the mixed-use form of development. And so I think the question would be, you know, could that be applied in other areas of general commercial in the city? Perhaps, perhaps not. But, I mean, I think its existence and recognizing the fact that it's not really an overlay district, and having a color for it on the zoning map, because I mean, the, part of the problem with some of the overlay districts is that there's no, to councillor Morrison's point about, you know, developers kind of look for the information that's out there, there's no hint that there's an overlay district for it anyway. I mean, you have to really get far along in your process to figure that out, or, you know, be lucky to talk to staff on the front end where we can advise them. But, I mean, it's not apparent, it's not, it's not a very good, it's not, it doesn't function well. I mean, it's a very administrative cleanup, and like I said, kind of into the weeds, but we think that there's value in it while we already have the code cracked open.
Sure. So, just to take that point further, you know, if the maximum building height's going to be applied across the district, then does that, across this MCUD, if we ever wanted to look at doing, you know, mixed-use development in a residential neighborhood on a smaller scale, those building heights, while available, wouldn't be appropriate? So, and I realize I'm five steps ahead here, but I'm just thinking about if we're going to change a general commercial designation to, you know, mixed-use commercial.
I think just to be clear, the general commercial district would still exist, so maybe, so like, the blue shows, the blue area will remain general commercial until someone applies to be in the mixed-use commercial district. And so the change from MUCOD to mixed-use commercial, or CMU, would only affect those properties that are currently zoned MUCOD, which again, says it's an overlay but doesn't function like one. And so if other properties were interested in taking advantage of a building height greater than 45 feet, those blue shaded properties, then instead of doing a text amendment to have the overlay zone applied to them, they would do a zoning map amendment to have the district apply to them.
Right, okay.
But it's functionally the same application.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Can you go to the proposed update slide? Oh, one more, sorry, the map. So, all right. So, why not 100 for that whole area? Is it because of Tiger? Is it because of traffic? Why not 100 for that whole area?
It essentially boils down to transportation and traffic.
Okay.
Then we start to see more constraints on the system. And I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I think really what it comes down to is, it's a question of, you know, going bigger or going small. And within the constraints that we had timewise, and just the budget that we had available to us, we went small. I mean, going bigger, I think, is longer term a possibility. I mean, I think that we're hopefully setting the stage for something larger. You know, one idea that our transportation consultant posed to us is a concept called a mixed-use multimodal area. And so particularly when you consider the future transportation improvements with...
That's where I'm going to.
Yeah.
That's where I'm leaning to here.
The Bridgeport, the Bridgeport station. And I think that that, I think that conversation becomes timely and ripe at that point. And so I think that that was our feeling, was is that, you know, we had interest from individual property owner. We wanted to move on a quick timeline. We took a swing and said like, hey, could we just increase the building height across here and say that it had no impact on the system appreciably? And the consultant said, no, we can't. And so we said, okay, what can we do that accommodates the individual request, but then also gives some additional opportunities? So takes the other vacant parcel there and says, hey, maybe that, maybe that person will want to develop first. And, you know, outreach to other property owners and said, are you interested? And yes, they were, so.
And the second question is, kind of ties in what you just mentioned, so the traffic feasibility study, how far did it go in advance? Because say, Bridgeport Transit Center is built, and this stays, the traffic impact, did they roll in any kind of traffic studies from Trimate, or they just looked a few years out?
No, I mean, it's the standard, I mean, it's the long-range planning horizon, so I mean, it's a 20-year to 2040.
But they didn't roll in, they didn't assume the transit center?
No, I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that they had the tools to be able to do that yet. But, I mean, I think that just, that makes it, makes a better case for the mixed-use multimodal area in the future. I think that one of the things that we learned in this lesson, in part why we pushed our consultant to look at the mixed-use equation, is that we actually found that in selecting, limiting some of the uses, but then putting compatible uses like residential and commercial together, there's actually trip reduction for essentially people who live in the residence, residential units, walking to the commercial, walking to the movie theater and so forth. And so, the more development there is, and the more ability there is to reduce trips that way, then the better for applying that in a larger scale. And I think, you know, longer term, thinking of Jonathan's discussion about urban renewal in the downtown, I mean, there's, there's that conversation too, I think, that, I mean, we're not there yet, we don't, we don't necessarily know, but I think this is, at least in my mind, a good step in that direction.
Yeah, because my, you know, the division I have happening, we approved this, and then in November, if the voters pass the traffic, you know, the transportation funding, obviously Trimate will have to look at this and know, when they're planning for this station, that we're looking at maybe going 100 feet here, incorporate that in their planning, and any impacts that might have on the traffic studies that they do in the future here around those four corners, because it's going to be impact, we know it. And just making sure it's not going to be a logjam there, so we got to make sure it comes out right.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, you brought, Mary brought up an interesting point, and I don't, kind of, maybe I'm getting too deep in the weeds, and maybe it's something that down the road you can present to council, but for those who've been around for a while now, you know, experienced it three years, I've become an expert on trip count down in the Basalt area. So, my question, you started to answer it to the mayor's question, and you mentioned the trip reduction. So, is that truly a thing? For example, if Max gets built and it's underutilized 50%, let's say, and it was designed for 3,000 trips, can you then allocate, you know, 1,500 additional trips in that area because you can utilize this underutilized transportation mode? Or is that just something that, as the mayor said earlier, just kind of gets into your, or maybe you said, gets into your 20-year forecast without really getting into specifics on the trip count per se? And the reason why it's a, becomes a really important question is there's the low-income housing next to Horizon, which is on a bus line that is, they're expanding. And so, we have a huge trip count problem over there, and so that poses a question for that. The development near what is the historic rail station, and again, in an area that is extremely sensitive to trip count, and so would there be a way to alleviate that? And then in this area, again, right across the street from what will be the Trimate Bridgeport Transit Center, and will there be a way then to, I mean, it's, I guess the long story version is, is trip production a real thing?
So, I mean, there, I guess a couple of questions within your question. So the first of which is, I think that, so there's vehicular trip reduction, right? And so that's, you know, citing compatible, compatible but different uses within each other. It's kind of not dissimilar to like, saying, you know, if you have one parking lot and you have a, you know, bar that operates at night and a bank that operates during the day, there's some ability for them to share that parking lot. And so it's kind of the same logic with vehicular trips, which is that you're going to, if, like, say, residential use, you know, one unit of residential generates 10 trips a day, and then one commercial business generates, you know, 20 trips per thousand square feet of commercial, then you would assume like a 25% trip reduction between those two uses because of that. And that's kind of how vehicular trip production works. The other question that was, I think, within your question goes back to that mixed-use multimodal area, and the ability to study geographic area and consider the different modes of, alternate modes of, non-vehicular modes of transportation available within that area. And there's some other kind of, there's some other technical details of how those work, but essentially what it does is it, it studies and it assumes a certain level of development that could be accommodated within that, within that area. And then it essentially just lets it happen, and it doesn't, it doesn't require as much transportation study in the future. And so there's some pros and cons to it. The pro is that you potentially can increase development to an area that is limited by trip generation, but then the con to it is that then you don't really have necessarily like local control of, I mean, because you're, you're basically abandoning, you know, use of vehicle trips as a, as a means to limit development. So there's, it's a double edged sword, and I think that that's probably a topic to come back and have like a 101 on, is how mixed-use multimodal areas work. I think that we need to do a little more study of whether or not that's something that's a good fit for Twolton. But if it were, and there was at least one or more areas where it would work, I think that I'd certainly be happy to work on, work on coming back with that.
I guess just to follow up on your comment, I would be interested, especially in light of how it, that argument would work with our neighbors, and specifically the issues that we have with Wilsonville over trip count in particular in the Basalt area, but which I suspect will begin having in the Bridgeport area if we start looking at doing things there. I can hear the phone already ringing from Tigard.
Anything else? But, I think, we're going to see it later on in the city council meeting. One of the slides, I think I recall from seeing at the mayor's meeting from Trimate, is they're assuming, wasn't it like 20% of the folks be walking or biking to the station? So a space like that with the height restrictions that we're envisioning, that have been, you know, mixed-use retail, residential, helps them hit that number of getting that 20% of the population walking or biking over to that station, so I think it's a good idea. All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I was going to say, continuing on with the development theme here. Next up, we have a development code updates. Steve just changed his chairs and Aquila comes up.
Hello, yeah, it's a community development work session tonight.
Welcome, again.
Thank you. Again, I'm Steve Koper, City Planning Manager, and with me is Aquila Herd-Ravich, your Community Development Director.
That's right.
All right, so here we're back to, we're here to talk about development code updates. So here's just an overview of tonight's work session. I'll start with some background. I'll talk a little bit about what the goals of the development code updates are, give some examples of a few potential updates, next steps.
Give some examples of a few potential updates, next steps, and then questions. So background, as most of all of you know, in 2018, the council approved the Development Code Improvement Project. It made the development code significantly easier to read, presenting information in a tabular format. While it did do some great things in that regard, it didn't do a lot of change to the actual text or implementation of the development code by design. It was so-called policy neutral. And so the idea at that time was that in the future, staff would work with the community council, planning commission, property owners and so forth to identify code changes that would be made at a later date. And so we're here at the later date. And so just the last bullet point, I guess summarizes also the fact that, you know, the council has, is part of their goals that they did at their most recent, or their, their prior, excuse me, advance, having a thriving and diversified economy. And so as you'll see from some of the examples that I've provided, I think that these small but important changes will help support that goal. So additional goals from the idea of this development code update package are to be responsive to legal requirements. And so I'll touch on that on the first example, requests from council. So of course, we're here tonight to learn of any additional things that anyone on the council may have identified. Requests from the community, requests from our customers, which we'll show a couple examples of. General best practices and observations from staff, which are mostly observations of the above. So the first example, and this touches on the updating our code to meet legal requirements. So House Bill 2001, which everyone knows is the, the missing middle bill passed in 2019, also prohibited cities from requiring off-street parking in conjunction with accessory dwelling units, which was effective as of January 1. And so that, the fact that we're a little bit behind on it, which many other jurisdictions are as well, kind of forms the nucleus or the core of these development code updates, cause we are legally required to do it. And so because the provisions only are enforceable, we would be updating the code to remove that provision. So turning to less of the legal requirements and more being responsive to customer feedback and particularly being responsive to a code update that I think helps further the council goal of a thriving economy. So under chapter 74 of our development code, all private onsite improvements are required to be built before a certificate of occupancy for the building can be issued. And so the practicality of what happens in that instance is that the contractor is focused on building the building. They're focused on the important things like fire, life, safety and the occupancy standards of the building, plumbing, sewer, all those other things. And then things that are aesthetic improvements, which are also important, such as landscaping, installation of sidewalk furniture, installation of bike racks, things like that, you know, often get kind of pushed toward the end of the project where they're focused on all of those other things. And then all of a sudden, there can be delays. You know, trees might not be available. It might not be a good time to plant trees because it's the summer or it's really cold. We've had instances where certain site improvements, like a bike rack is on back order unexpectedly. They thought they had time to do it, they didn't. And so as it summarizes in bullet point number two, requiring, just saying, well, sorry, you need to, you need to do the improvement regardless if you're gonna get a certificate of occupancy, has been deemed to be overly rigid and costly because basically you have a built building that you can't occupy. And so what we're proposing with this one is to add a provision of the development code, which will allow for payment of a, a bond or cash payment or equivalent to secure that future installation. So in other words, they would put up money in a multiplier of the value of the improvement. So typical would be 125% of the value of the improvements. And so providing that they've met all of the fire, life, safety requirements and the building's otherwise habitable and people can safely make ingress, ingress and egress off the property, all that good stuff. It would give them time to either, you know, find a better time to plant things. It would give them time to secure another supplier for the bike rack that they couldn't install and so forth. So we think that it would just in net result in a more responsive and flexible development process. And so that is the second of our updates that we proposed. And then the last one, and so this is, this is an addition that I put into the PowerPoint that I didn't have time to put into the version that was with, within your packet. And so I'll just try to walk through this one, but I think, I think it's hopefully pretty obvious and I think a pretty clear blind spot, in my opinion, of the code. And so simply put, the development code has setbacks. So the distance that a structure needs to be from the property line to the structure. The development code does not differentiate from any, any, any different kinds of developments. So you have your house and your house has to be 15 feet from the rear property line. Well, if you wanna put in a tough shed, the code doesn't distinguish just because you have a smaller accessory structure that is very much customarily put right next to the fence in the backyard within the property line. And so this example is a recent example that I thought was timely, which is, you know, very attractive covered accessory structure here where someone can brave the Pacific Northwest winter and have a barbecue outside. And so again, this, you know, under our code, this structure wouldn't be allowed because it's not 15 feet to the rear property line. And so in doing just kind of a brief analysis of some of our other neighboring jurisdictions, you know, both Tigard and Sherwood have a provision that has differential setbacks for accessory structures that are smaller. Washington County has one, Clackamas County has one. There was a lot of information, so I didn't want to put it on the slide. But Clackamas County had, had a kind of complicated, but I think in some ways fair system of basing the setbacks on both accessory structure size and height. So if you got too tall, you couldn't be too close to the property line, cause that would impede on your neighbor's enjoyment of their own property. There are certainly a lot of different ways to skin the cat. You know, the typical one is that for like the, you know, under 100 square feet, so someone wants to put just some kind of like gazebo or something like that, that there's really typically no building setback. And then the under 200 square feet, which are things that don't require a building permit, but still require some compliance with setbacks, they would be either a zero or a three feet or a two feet, something like that reduced. And then when you get over 200 square feet and you need a building permit, you still might have a reduced height, but you'd still have some setback, like a five foot instead of a 15, just as an example. And so I think with this one, what we would propose is to work with the planning commission. And I would add that we've already met with the planning commission on this issue on kind of a work session basis with them as well in the past to come up with a proposal to present to council. So that's the last example. Potential next steps, so again, because the legally required part of this code update forms the center of it, we're proposing to go forward with at least that portion. And we would send notification to affected agencies, property owners, other parties. So of course, the accessory dwelling unit provision, because it affects residential properties, it affects the uses that they can do on their property, we actually do have to notify them individually with what's called a measure 56 notice. And then of course, we would do our other outreach as usual with that. And so then we would present the development code updates to the planning commission for feedback and a recommendation. And in the case of the accessory structure setbacks, we would work with them to present them some code options and essentially work through a solution to present to council. And then of course, we would present the actual text amendment with proposed recommendations at a public hearing. And so as I alluded to earlier, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions. But of course, if there's other, if there's specific development code updates that anyone in the council has identified over the course of their time on council, we'd be happy to look at that as well. Thank you for considering these and again, happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to throw in really quick is what we're thinking about is making this kind of a, a program similar to what you see with the public works codes updates. Similar in the fact that they would come to you regularly with a couple of changes. Very different in that it's require a public hearing and interaction with the planning commission and maybe other community engagement. So that's, that's what we'd like to see kind of get going is just kind of get this regular cycle of, of making these updates that fit what Steve was referring to, either legal requirements or being, trying to be flexible for what we're hearing from our customers.
Great. Questions, comments? Robert?
Thank you for the presentation. Two detailed questions. One on the idea of taking a bond or cash for those development obligations. Does that have a timeline on it that says if developer doesn't put it in by six weeks, six months, whatever it is, then the city will, you know, go against the bond and put the improvement in itself?
Yeah, there are some, there are some additional details to that, which will, we would bring back to. We've worked with our legal counsel, city attorney Sean Brady quite extensively on this one. And so I think that we feel confident that we'll have something that is both flexible, but then also legally defensible and appropriate.
Yeah, I've heard some good things about that guy. Second one, on the accessory structure, does that include decks? Cause isn't there, as I understand it, the state building code is the one that provides the setback requirements and permit requirements on that?
So there's, I mean, there's a couple of different pieces to the puzzle. I mean, one is that yes, most codes do differentiate between decks. And so, I mean, it's typically, it's kind of the same thing is that if it's under 30 inches above grade, then, then it's not a building permit. And then if it's over, then it is. And so there's some additional, I mean, we can, in, in my research, we came across some, some differential reviews. The one thing I think to keep in mind, which is true of all setbacks really, is, is that there's setbacks for, you know, traditional zoning purposes, which essentially were kind of like just, again, not intruding on the enjoyment of your neighbor's property versus then building code and fire code have their own setbacks for combustible materials from another combustible material. So if you have a wood fence, then you, even if we said that it was a zero foot setback for the aesthetic purposes, it still might be a, a three foot setback, let's say. Or, you know, there's some alternatives where, which of course, in the residential application are really practicable. But as far as like, you know, building firewalls or, or things of that nature. And so there's, there's a little bit of additional technical details to that, but.
And with respect to the setbacks, I thought I heard you say something about zero foot setbacks. And I would strongly discourage that as an attorney, just because people don't get surveys done and they build something else in somebody's yard and they cut down their tree and they get sued and it creates all kinds of problems. So I would suggest at least a minimum setback of a couple of feet, you know, maybe five. Just, I mean, you can't completely eliminate the possibility of that, but at least mitigate the possibility.
Yeah, I think that's a fair, I mean, so I think I will say that I found zero in some of the code provisions. And I think that the expectation is, is that that would be, if it were applied, it would be in the like under 100 foot. So it'd be something that, that's essentially movable and that people would be required to comply with fire codes still. But I think that that point is well taken and we can incorporate some kind of minimal, as opposed to zero setback into the updates.
Great.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up on Councilor Kellogg's question and then I have a couple of my own. So are we currently enforcing then the, like these wood sheds that are built in the back of someone's yard? Are we enforcing those?
Well, so.
Setbacks?
What did you, I'm sorry, what was that last piece?
Setback, are we enforcing the setback rules with those?
On a complaint basis.
On a complaint basis only. So do we know what the, do we, have we gotten a report yet back from TVFR on the fire that took place off of Avery and up the, behind the church there where the, it started in a shed, spread to a house, spread to another shed and spread to another house? And from what I could tell from the one picture I saw, they all looked like they were on top of each other. And I didn't even think about it until you're talking now and you're talking about fire codes. And those didn't look like they made any type of setback. They may have, I don't wanna, it's hard to tell from a picture, angles, different things, but.
I, I haven't looked at that.
Because that would be my other concern is the, the safety. I mean, the setbacks are there for a reason and notwithstanding, Councilor Kellogg's very valid point about just, you know, issues with taking things down that don't belong to you, just the pure, the safety issue. And so I would be a little concerned that, but I, I trust our planning commission, they do great work. So, and, and you guys do great work in working with them. The other, only other question I wanna make is on ADR, the parking, we know that that rule is no longer valid and is no longer enforceable. But I would also point out that Lake Oswego doesn't have that rule and they set theirs up. And there was a lot, I remember there was a lot of concern, a lot of discussion that they were creating problems. And it turned out they didn't create any problems, just literally was not an issue. And so that, that's probably a really good example of looking at your neighbors and then saying, hey, it's not a problem. So let's get, get rid of it. But the certificate of occupancy, I have two issues on the certificate of occupancy. The, the first is, is Councilor Kellogg said with the, just, you know, what happens if they don't do something within time period? But my other concern is the financial hardship. In particular, I'm thinking of somebody who's doing something and now they have a, a $40,000 landscaping job that has to be done. And so they're required to put up a $50,000 bond. And on top of that, they still have to pay 40,000, a lot of, and, and landscapers in particular, you know, they want their money upfront cause they don't trust you. And so will there be some kind of provisions? And particularly, I'm thinking of if you need to get, and let's take the ADRs for example, somebody adding that on for an in-law, for a student, I'm just going to assume that they're doing it out of, with some financial considerations that are a, a struggle to meet. And then when we turn around and start saying, well, we need to start posting bonds on top of that, we create an obstacle that makes it difficult for them to partake in, in, in something that could really be a solution to some of their, their, their housing problems. So, you know, I, I, I don't expect an answer and I'm just posing that out there as something that I see as an, as an issue with respect to hardship, financial hardship.
I can, I can give, I guess, a, a partial answer perhaps, if, if that's okay. So I think, you know, on the, the bonds, creating an additional financial hardship, my previous experience is working in a jurisdiction that also had these sureties. And by and large, the most common way of providing financial assurance was a line, was a line of credit from a bank, a standby line of credit. And so essentially, it's not really a cost. I mean, most major developers have a bank that they're banking with. And so that, that basically they provide the surety backed by the bank's faith in them.
But would you not, for an ADR, would you not need an occupancy, a, a certificate of occupancy before you can move in?
There really wouldn't be very many site improvements that would be required with that. I mean, we're talking about like larger scale commercial developments. There's not really very many above.
I'm not worried about the developers. Again, I'm worried about the smaller operations that get tangled up in this web of, for lack of a better word, and maybe not appropriate, but red tape that was meant for somebody else, but they get caught in. Because, you know, they do, they're trying to add, their, their design included an additional driveway for whatever reason. And the driveway is not completed, but it's not necessary. But the driveway is gonna cost them 35,000, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm posing a lot of what ifs. I'm just, I'm concerned about the things we're trying to fix not be fixable because we've created a barrier that we didn't intend to create because it was meant for somebody else. That's all.
So, yeah, a couple of things, not to go on too long with it. But generally, as Steve was saying, the, the sureties, well, let me back up a little bit. So with the example that you're giving with accessory dwelling units and with kind of development of homes, single family homes or in general, we don't have the same type of review process, that architectural review process, where there's a number of either conditions that they need to meet, which is sometimes where that problem comes in, in the end. A lot of times with accessory dwellings and just residential development, there's just a code and you meet it and then you, you can go build.
Can I, oops, sorry. I'm just gonna have one more thing. The idea behind these are voluntary. So we're not required, the city's not requiring a posting a bond. The requirement is put in your, your stuff. If you can't put in your stuff, you can post a bond in order to get your certificate early. And so that, that's the idea behind it. So if somebody doesn't wanna pay the upfront costs, they can just put in the, the infrastructure.
Right.
You got something? I got something, but you can go. All right. So two questions on the surety bond. So do, do you have envisioned list of what can be bonded and what couldn't? Cause you mentioned life and safety, obviously not. Because you mentioned life and safety, obviously not bonded, but is there a list in other cities? Were you envisioning, you mentioned like landscaping and stuff like that. Could I go back to, I know one instance a few years ago where they were trying to get their certificate of occupancy, but they didn't have the right safety lights in, and that was holding it up, and safety lights couldn't come in for like, a week or so? Now, is that truly a life thing, or is that something, a life and safety issue, or is that more, I'm just...
So we have a definitive list of what can be bonded and what can't, so people know? Is that, you're going to get to that?
So I think, I think the answer is that I had taken, I've so far taken a stab at creating the draft provision, and I think that the way our code breaks out site improvements, like, so it's, you know, Chapter 73, Chapter 74, it would be improvement subject to those chapters. And so then the other pieces would not be subject to that. And I think it's probably, and I think this is where Sean's experience will come in, is that, you know, adding a provision saying that this doesn't apply to things that are fire, life, safety. I mean, the same thing is, is that, you know, you can't, you can't bond for the parking lot if people don't have somewhere to park, but if there is, example, if there's excess parking that wasn't being built and wasn't needed for the occupancy, and there is a way for the site to be accessed safely, then maybe that could work. I mean, some of it is supposed to be voluntary and flexible.
And that, you just, where was my head? As long as these things are flexible, and it's not night and day, black and white, there's a little bit of gray, that we can work with folks, because, you know, you know we get the phone calls about, you know, staff is holding something up, so as long as there's a little bit of flexibility that, you know, the city can work with somebody. The second thing is, this is more of a Betsy thing, when you talk about the accessory, accessory dwelling units with the CIO meetings coming up, maybe have her suggest that that be a subject for each CIO meeting. Because folks are always asking about it, and maybe, you know, some staff could be up there and spend five, 10 minutes, and everyone in the neighborhood know about it who attends the meeting.
Okay, that's a great suggestion.
Because a lot of times they're looking for subjects at the meeting, so this is a good one. We know they're going to be talking about marijuana too, so we got two juicy subjects for CIO meetings coming up, so. Yep, big turnouts. Anything else? You had something, Robert?
Yeah, just too quick when you asked for updates in the future. We've talked in the past about looking at building heights in the central commercial to make some, you know, beneficial projects pencil out, or at least make them more likely to pencil out, so I'd like to have that discussion. And then also in our advance and on several other instances, we've talked about divorcing the comprehensive plan from the development code. And I'd like to just talk about advantages and disadvantages that I realize it's a very big conversation, but just tee that up for our discussion.
Sure, and I think, you know, kind of tying in with the beginning of this, the background of why we're here, we're intending to come back to council on March 23rd with a work plan that includes some implementation of items that were identified in the 12 and 2040 project, which includes that separation of the comprehensive plan from the development code.
Thank you.
All right, so anything else? Because we got a, we've got 20 minutes, we still got one big discussion to go.
I just, I wanted to thank you for being, it seems like you've been very thoughtful on that. We want to allow people in the residences to, you know, do what they want, but also consider the safety and not impeding on our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so just so, for time management, we still got one more item, the food cart item, so we'll push the, our agenda review to our regular council meeting, and so we have those extra 10 minutes. So next item up is food carts. Aquila.
I changed seats. That must be it. Okay, all right. Okay, so, yes, food carts, this discussion is coming back at, at your direction from, not the last meeting, but January 27th. So just, I guess, a little bit of background, so at that meeting on January 27th, there, a couple of you have brought up the idea of allowing food carts along, in general commercial along 99W, and so, and then there was some, a request to come back for discussion, and so here we are, back to talk about that. Okay, so where, where it, where food carts are allowed today are, and I'll flip to a map in just a second, but I'm just going to tell you first, is the commercial office zone, except for within 200 feet of the central commercial, recreational, commercial, medical center, light manufacturing, general manufacturing, manufacturing park, manufacturing business park, and institutional. So you'll notice that general commercial is not on that list at this point in time. That, this is the map of what that looks like today. I realize that this is an older map, and it doesn't include Basalt Creek, so in the next map, you'll see Basalt Creek included there in the bottom. But this represents all those zones that I talked about and where, where food carts are allowed as of today. And so then, this is what we're talking about. We got Basalt Creek into the map now, so food carts would be allowed down here, this is, just for orientation, and this is Horizon High School. And then the areas that were specifically brought up were general commercial along 99W, so these two areas, right, right here. And that's essentially what I have to present, and so, yeah, you may have time for your agenda review, but, so the, the next steps would be for, just if you have direction around that, if you want us to bring back in ordinance, amending where they're currently located, or if you want us to, if you'd like to leave, leave it as is. It is in the municipal code, the food cart regulations, and all, all that means is that it, the same levels of, of public meetings are not required, so it doesn't need to go back through planning commission and do, and do that kind of thing. So it would basically come back under general business as a, yeah, I think it's general business, as a public hearing. And I, well, we leave it up to you guys, and if I can answer questions, if you have any.
Questions, discussion?
Robert. Yeah, I appreciate the quick reaction to this, as most of you remember this came up as an outfit that was looking to add some food cart service, and we were, I think, taken a little bit by surprise that food cart service wasn't available there. I think we can all agree, our original intention was to put food carts in an area that would serve the far west industrial area, and I think this amendment accomplishes that. So I'm in favor of it, thank you.
Other comments?
I'm totally in favor of it, too.
Paul?
So, just a quick follow-up. So we, we currently allow them in the commercial office areas, except in the downtown area. And so how, I, I, I never could quite follow how they were allowed, because I remember we had the discussion specifically over by Micilani Bridge area and how now they would be allowed there. How is it that they got excluded from 99?
Because general commercial is not, was, today, general commercial's not an allowed place. So what, what the map isn't showing is where general commercial also exists in the city.
Oh, okay.
So up, up in the ear, the antler, that's all general commercial. Most of this is central, but kind of around the edges, there's some general commercial as well. General commercial is over here. So, so the reason why general commercial on the whole got excluded is that it surrounded central and was very close to other brick and mortar restaurants.
No, and I understood, I understood that part, but I, I guess I wasn't aware, I'll, I'll just admit it, I was not aware that it also included other areas outside. My understanding was it was that specific area, because I remember at the time, it started when I was sitting over there, and then two years later, it ended up over here. So it was a long process, but I remember specifically the Fred Meyer area and the map and, and what was and what wasn't, and I never remember seeing a bubble in other areas where it was excluded. And so that's where my confusion comes from. So it's currently not allowed anywhere in the Bridgeport area, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's always like, these caveats, like Bridgeport has their own, right, and the mall itself has their own food carts, they, they have a separate...
Right, but those are more permanent and within the landlord's...
Yeah.
Okay, no, and I, and I get all that, so, yeah, I, I guess I don't have an issue with this because my understanding was it was already legal.
Oh, sure.
And so that's, that's where my confusion comes from, and so I, I don't have an issue.
Okay.
I'm in favor of it. I reached out to the Twelton Chamber, and the Twelton Chamber is supportive of this, as well as the commercial CIO. I have no issues with this, so our two business interests, if you will, are fully supportive of us changing the ordinances out there. Anyone, sounds like all five of us are okay with it?
Okay, all right, then, I can't promise you a time right now, I didn't actually, I don't think it'd be that far, but, so I'll, I'll work with Cheryl and Sean, and we'll put something together and bring it back to you.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
All right. That was, yeah, that was quick, but still don't know if we have enough time, but, so let's go over the agenda for tonight. Who's turn is it to lead the pledge this week? Because we had the scouts do it last time. So Paul, you up? All right, so Paul's doing the pledge. I don't believe we have any proclamations this week. Any questions on the consent agenda? All right. What's that?
I haven't decided.
Haven't decided yet? Okay, you've got time. Rather than rush through the communications, let's go ahead and just take a 10-minute break, and we'll start Buck up at 7:00. My computer's deciding to want, it wants to reboot, but I don't want it to reboot.